Call to order this meeting of Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. And we'll begin with our statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. All right, and with that, do we want to go ahead and make an amendment to the agenda?
Yeah, I'll move that we continue the enterprise fleet management agreement, item F, until next week, which would be April 1st.
March 31st.
Here we go.
March 31st. Perfect, yeah, gotcha. We're all on the same page.
Yeah.
I can't believe it started in a March.
Yeah, second.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion in a second. And I forgot to note for the record that the entire Board of Commissioners is present for this meeting. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Thank you all, and we will now move on to our department's updates. Ms. Cottle, good morning.
Good morning. Hopefully, or maybe hopefully, I would assume that most people tuned into the governor's announcement yesterday evening. It is a bit concerning and I think premature, given our numbers, but wanted to just talk a little bit about where we are. Our cases per hundred thousand this week are coming in about ninety-five per hundred thousand, and a hundred would put us back into orange on that particular metric, and it would put us back in yellow from blue on that advisory map that we've talked about every week. So I just wanted to give a little balance about what that number means and why it gives me a little bit of pause when I see those numbers going up and getting closer to that hundred mark instead of coming down and getting closer to that ten mark. So we are concerned about the increase in cases that we're seeing, the increase in variants, we've talked about that, that continues to rise in Indiana as well. While I hope that we will see a drop and, you know, this is, will just be a fluke and a blip and we will start coming back down, the realist in me says, we have not, you know, we've done a little bit of bouncing this, these past weeks, we're just now have people getting back from spring break travel. So I am very concerned that those numbers will increase and will continue to see community spread of the virus. So this is not a time to slow our efforts, you know, we can see the finish line, and I think that that's what everybody is wanting is to get to that finish line. But I would say that we all need to kind of dig in and find that energy to get us to that finish line and maintain all the things that we've done to get us there with masking, distancing, testing, all those things, including vaccination, so that we can get to the finish line and not have to back back up. This is not the time to slow down and take our eye off, off that prize of hitting that finish line. I don't expect our local regulations to change in terms of any kind of lessening of restrictions by April 6th. I do expect that the health officer of the board meets on April 6th, and I do expect that the health officer will have a statement in terms of what may or may not change in terms of our local regulations in the coming days. We do encourage everybody to test, that is still very important. And again, with spring break travel and spring activities, I think everybody has just had sort of that spring fever and it's made us kind of want to relax things a little bit. So we are encouraging everybody to be tested. If you are symptomatic, certainly you need to isolate and be tested. But if not, if you have traveled, if you've gathered in a crowd, you've not been wearing your mask like you really should, those kinds of things, we'd encourage you to schedule an appointment for tests or even walk in. We have the community site at Morton Street is available on Monday and Wednesdays from eight to three, Tuesday and Friday, ten to seven, and Saturday, nine to two. They do have rapid antigen testing for anybody who's symptomatic. So we encourage you to go there, especially if you have symptoms, you can get those results very quickly. If you were symptomatic and they do the buy next now card and it is negative, then they will do a PCR test on you to confirm that you are in fact negative and that it was not just missed. The Optum site that people are familiar with at the Armory is open Monday through Friday, eight to eight. And so we have those two sites that are certainly open and have capacity to see you. I will say the Optum site will also be closed on April 5th and 6th. There'll be some things going on at the Armory that is causing them to close those two days, and they will open on April 10th to kind of make up for some of those hours. In terms of vaccine clinic, we still have the convention center site is up and running. We're still doing first doses. Anyone who gets that first shot at the convention center will return there for their second dose of vaccine as well. So we will be there through April, giving both doses of vaccine and getting people completely vaccinated with the Moderna vaccine. And we had some questions about that, I think it had confused some people. So if you started the convention center, you will end at the convention center, and so it will be very important to not just cancel your appointment or miss it because once we get through that clinic, then we won't have the Moderna, the, both the hospital and the IU site will be using Pfizer vaccine. Next week, the Assembly Hall site does open, and the appointments are filled now through April 10th. So people were excited, and I know that there was sort of a pause in the ability to get those first dose appointments. We are prepared to increase capacity there as vaccine increases. And so, you know, once that vaccine flows, we'll certainly increase those. We are making our plans and revisiting our plans for mass vaccination sites there with Johnson and Johnson, once the state gets those and can get those out to us. So sometime in April, we do expect that we will have, whether it's two days, one day, four days, I'm not sure about that, that all depend on the amount of vaccine we get, but we do expect to have some mass clinics in April using that Johnson and Johnson vaccine. The very small amount that we have received of that earlier has been used with our homebound population. And again, a shout out to Monroe Fire Protection District and the City of Bloomington Fire Department for helping us with our outreach to both our homebound population and our shelters. Very grateful for that. And the last thing I have is that the Health Department is now all back at the Health Services Building. Again, we are open by appointments, kind of back to usual operations in that regard. We are still working through a few things. I think our, our phones and voicemails are now working, I think, so trying to catch up on all the various messages that we may have been left over the, the past several days. So be patient with us, we still have lots of unpacking to do, but we are open and operational and want to thank you and tech services and maintenance and everyone who has helped us with, with the move. It's very, very much appreciated.
Thank you so much. Can't wait to see the new offices. That sounds so amazing. And let's see if there are comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just want to point out that the firefighters have been pretty incredible throughout this entire pandemic and have really come forward and, and helped out in so many different ways that it's, it's very appreciated.
Absolutely.
Good point. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I want to congratulate Ms. Cottle for being named Woman of the Year. In my mind, she's the person who has shepherded us through this pandemic. It's been scary, it's been frightening, and she has stayed calm, she's knowledgeable, her leadership has been incredible. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you for everything, and this is a well-deserved recognition.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Amazing, we're so glad you are being recognized for everything you do all the time, but especially through this crisis that's lasted forever.
It has.
Thank you for everything you do and everyone on your team. Amazing, Board of Health, Dr. Sharp, everybody's just, just done wonders for us, so thank you for that. All right, and let's turn now to emergency management, Ms. Petroline.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I do want to echo congratulations to Penny for Woman of the Year. She has been wonderful to work with and all of her team, and she definitely deserves that recognition, so congratulations. I just have a couple of things. I just want to say that the March blood drives were successful. I think maybe we only had two or three open slots still when they actually went on that day, but I still find that to be a great success. We've been successful for an entire year, so I think it's great, and I hope we can continue through, especially till April. The next two blood drives are scheduled for April 29th. Those are morning and afternoon time slots, and then on April 30th, those are afternoon and evening time slots. If you'd like to look at different available times and sign up for one, please go to our website at co.monroe.in.us. Also, I'd like to talk about tornado safety. This is the last week of March, so I know that we've had a pattern of talking about how to prepare for a tornado in the beginning of the month, and then how to respond to a tornado. And I like to talk to the subject of a little bit about recovery. So there are still a lot of hazards that can go on after a tornado goes through. One thing we really recommend is making sure you still listen to the National Weather Service and that you listen to local authorities and those alerts that we tend to send out. Those are going to be the most up-to-date information and most accurate information. So continue to listen to those. Please stay clear of fallen power lines and utility lines. If you do find one, please call those companies and let them know where those lines are located. Thirdly, please contact your family members and friends after an event like this. It is recommended that you actually do text or social media outlets rather than actually making a phone call, because phone calls tend to bombard the cell phone towers and everyone's trying to communicate at the same time. So we're trying to make sure that those lines can stay open. So again, we recommend texting or using social media to contact your community. If you do find yourself needing some medical attention, please contact your healthcare provider, or if you need emergency medical attention, of course, call the ambulance, 911. And then last but not least, if you are going to help with cleanup of debris, make sure you protect yourself, wear your boots, wear your jeans, wear some gloves, safety goggles, hard hat if you have one, because you never know what you're going to find in looking through debris. So please stay safe, hopefully we never have to worry about that, but just keep that in mind if that could possibly happen, how to safely recover from a disaster. And thank you very much, Commissioners, that's all I have.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Petroline, we appreciate all of your work, especially while Ms. Moore is on a well-deserved vacation. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just that I really hope we can get through this year without a tornado.
Us too.
Absolutely. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, if people can't, people can only donate blood every fifty-six days, so if they can't donate in April, I just want to remind them that we also have, you guys have also arranged for blood drives in late May and late June. So there's still opportunities for people to participate in those things.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great point. Also, just a reminder for anybody, we do provide updates not only on vaccine availability and when that opens up a bit more, but also on weather alerts, any travel advisories, things like that through our resident alert system. Just go to co.monroe.in.us and click on the megathon and sign up. Excellent, thank you so much, thanks for being here today.
Thanks.
And we do not have an update from Ms. Ridge for the Highway Department, except that she said they're patching poples, which is such an appropriate thing this time of year. So if you have any report, please go to co.monroe.in.us and go to the Highway Department page and report one. That would be most helpful for our residents to keep us informed. And next we have Ms. Elfman from Veterans Affairs, while we still have you this month.
Good morning, Commissioners, yep, you got me for a few more days.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, make, make the best of it. I want to give a report on the vaccine program through the Veterans Administration. They are providing Janson or Johnson and Johnson vaccines through the clinic. They schedule clinic, clinic days for the vaccine are Fridays only. If you would like to schedule one, you'll call the Patient Response Center in Indianapolis They would appreciate it if you tell them that you would like to be scheduled into whatever clinic is closest to you, keeping in mind that while the Bloomington Clinic may not have appointments, there's a clinic in Martinsville that might, there's also a clinic in Terre Haute that might, and then of course, there's a clinic in Edinburgh Columbus area that also might have an appointment that, that you could slide into. Cannot encourage veterans enough to, to get their vaccines. It's, it's critical, I've had mine, it was fifteen, twenty minutes and done. I think it took longer to fill out the paperwork than it did to get the vaccine. So please, veterans, if you're hearing me, go get your vaccine if you haven't already. And of course, if you want to drive to Indianapolis twice, you can always go to the vaccine clinic in Indianapolis and receive the Moderna vaccine through them.
Great.
Please.
Thank, thank you so much for that important reminder, Ms. Elfman, for our veterans in our community. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just, everyone, please get vaccinated as soon as you can.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thanks for, for notifying everybody. Could you maybe put that contact phone number in the chat?
I can, absolutely can.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Elfman.
Y'all have a good day.
You too. And the next, I, let's see first if we have other departments ahead, which, who are here to provide an update. And it doesn't appear we do. So the next item on our agenda is public comment, this is public comment for items that are not on our agenda. It is limited to three minutes per comment, and we have a notification when there are thirty seconds left in your time. And there it is, and if you hear that, you have thirty seconds left to speak. The, the same timer will be used on our general agenda items. So let's see if anybody has any public comment for us for items not on our agenda, just raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen. And I do not, oh, we do have one, TC. Can you give us your name, please?
Good morning, this is Tamby Michael Cassidy. How are you ladies this morning?
Good morning.
Good morning, happy to be greeting you. Is it okay for me to begin?
Please.
Awesome. Okay, so my name is Tamby, I'm with Blind Squirrels. I am a property owner who's working on a development at the intersection of that road and South Roger Street, and I just wanted to speak to you this morning because I am super excited that my PUD will be coming to you for consideration with a positive recommendation from the Plan Commission as of last evening. And for those of you who are familiar with the project, I, I, I hope that you are happy with what you're seeing there, and if you, if you are not familiar with it, I would like to invite you to see a model of the property. And I also would like to extend that invitation to anyone from the public if you would like to contact me. I don't know if I'm visible on the screen, I was going to do kind of a flash card with my email address on it, but I can just verbally tell you what that is. It is B-L-I-N-D-S-Q-R-L-S at gmail.com. And again, this is Tamby, and just, I really am looking forward and hoping to get your support because this property is a property that has not been a very inviting place to be over its history from the, I remember it from days of grade school, thinking, wow, something else should be going on there. So it's just, it's kind of at the entrance to what was really the, kind of an economic section to the old Clear Creek, and it involves a, a small amount of apartment homes and a few townhomes with, mixed with a little bit of commercial to provide services that folks in the neighborhood have been asking for, for a while now. So anyway, I welcome any questions or comments you may have, and I look forward to your support, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. All right, let's see if there is anyone else who has any public comment to offer for items not on our agenda. Okay, seeing none. We'll come back to our agenda for the next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes for March 17th, 2021.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any comments or edits? All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes for March 17th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Thank you so much, and we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of the claims document, accounts payable for March 24th, 2021, and payroll for March 26th, 2021.
Second?
Great, we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Sensensteine, are you here to present this?
I'm filling in for Jordan this morning.
Great, thank you.
Nope, no baby yet, but they're, they're moving in that direction, I think. So I'm going to read a bunch of numbers off for you. So AP claims, the total was $1,421,743.25. And then three of the large items this period were, one for the Monroe County Treasurer of $356,655, and that was a transfer of CARES payroll funds to County General based on the Commissioners' ordinance 2021-06. The next item was area, for Area 10 and Rural Transit in the amount of $354,730, and that was grant funds for the fourth quarter of 2020. $195,679 were the state portion of that, and $159,051 was the federal portion. And then the third item was for Life Designs in the amount of $10341.25, and that was the first quarter payment for them. As far as payroll is concerned, the total was $1,610,387.14, with $1,136,947.14 being the, the main payroll, supplemental payroll and incentives, and then $474,292.35 were all the payroll-related AP claims.
Great, thank you so much for filling in for Mr. Miller, he did a great job, we appreciate you. Let's see if we have any tough questions for you. Start with Commissioner Jones?
Not today.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I'm just proud that we're able to help places like Life Designs and Stoneville.
Yes, absolutely. Excellent, let's see if there's any public comments on this item, just simply click, raise hands up on your Zoom screen, and we will get you on for your three-minute comment period. And I do not see any hands raised. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on accounts payable for March 24th, 2021, and payroll, March 26th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Great, thank you so much. I will note for the record, we have received a report from the Clerk of the Circuit Court, and that is the February 2021 report, and Waits and Measures submitted their report, which runs from February, February 16th through March 15th, 2021. And with that, we will move on to new business, please.
Move to approve a consulting agreement with Hope All Right LLC, fund name JD AI Programming, fund number 9123, in the amount of $5,143.
I think it's Hope All Like, but a second.
Sorry.
Small thing, isn't it?
My prescription is not very good anymore.
Oh, no.
So we have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Ms. McAfee here to tell us all about it, please.
Hi, and good morning to all of you, it's nice to see you, even if it is virtually. So what this is, is it's JD AI Funds and our Juvenile Division Accountability or Juvenile Detention Accountability, oh my goodness, I think my brain's on Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, sorry about that. Way too much talk about vaccines and COVID and wearing masks still, I think. Anyway, so this is the grant money that we get from the Department of Correction, and every year, as you know, we submit for a grant, and that period is July 1 through June 30th. Because of the pandemic and so much of what we had planned, we weren't able to do anything with, we were able to extend the 1920 grant through the end of December of 2020, which was great to give us a chance to spend those dollars, but what it did was made us switch around a little bit what we were planning to do from July of 20, to June of 21. So all of that to be said, we were so fortunate to be able to connect with Amy Abel, who is the facilitator for the TBRI training, which is Trust-Based Relational Interventions, and bringing that to Monroe County. It is more than an educational kind of workshop that we've been able to offer to the community in the past, this really is an intervention style, it is specifically for kids and families who have experienced trauma. It was originally designed for kids and families who had experienced severe trauma, but the research is very promising and saying that, you know, most of us have experienced some level of trauma, and this kind of a response, this kind of approach is very, very successful for all of us. So we're, we will be training our juvenile probation staff, the training will allow for, I think it's up to fifty participants, so we'll have some capacity for community members as well. We've sent out a few invitations to targeted folks, but if anyone watching is interested in learning more about it, I would be happy to have a conversation. As I said, it's not just a As I said, it's not just a two-day workshop, kind of one and done. It really is an intervention strategy that we hope to bring to Monroe County to start working, be more aware of how to work better with our most vulnerable populations.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this sounds like a really wonderful program. I know that we kind of joined the JDAI programming maybe five or six years ago. I was wondering if you've really, what kind of results you've seen from it at this point?
Yeah, we actually, we started in January of 2015. So we were a little late in the 1415 grant cycle. But we are seeing, and I can come back and be better prepared for some data, but every year we have to do an annual results report, and our baseline year is 2013. I can tell you, we are seeing decreases in the number of kids going to detention. And not just for 2020. 2020, I think, is gonna be viewed as kind of this quirk year that personally, I think we should all set our standards to. If we could not detain those, that number of kids in 2020, I think that should be our benchmark. If we were not able to arrest that many people in 2020, I think that should be our benchmark. But it really does kind of make the numbers a little wonky. But that aside, we have seen dramatic decreases in the number of kids going to detention, the number of unique kids going into detention. We are seeing a slight increase in the length of stay for kids, but that's actually to be expected because what we're trying to do is not put kids in for one or two or three days because in those instances, there are probably community resources we could utilize to prevent that detention altogether. So we are seeing a slight increase in the use or in the length of stay for detention, but nothing that's dramatic or nothing that's overly concerning. In all candor, the area that I think we have the most room for growth and improvement is ensuring the equitability of youth justice involvement for our youth of color and our white youth. Monroe County is involved in the Race Equity and Inclusion Pilot Program through the state JDAI. And so that's allowed us to bring the Interrupting Racism for Children workshops that some of you have participated in. We had a one-day Understanding Systemic Racism workshop that many, many people in the community were involved in. We're hosting through JDAI a virtual book club that some of our team members are reading a book together and then having conversations about it. So the area of the race equity inclusion, while, as I said, we have a lot of room for growth, I think it's something that I'm very proud to say Monroe County has been a leader in the state in dealing with. We have a partnership with CCLP, which is Children's Center for Law and Policy. They're working very closely with us in law enforcement, looking at creating some front-end diversion so that we can completely eliminate the use of youth justice system involvement for families and kids who come to us because they need our help. You know, that, that's not really what the youth justice system should be used for. Those are community resources. Those are community supports. Those are community folks that can step up and be helpful for those kids and not get them logged into the justice system. As we all know, once we get, once families get involved with us, sometimes we have a hard time breaking up with them. So we're trying to figure out ways that we can prevent their involvement, unless it really is critical.
Thank you. That's really good to hear.
Thank you for the question.
Sure.
Commissioner Giffens, comments, questions?
I've been emailing back and forth a lot the last two days with Ms. McAfee, and I'm really tickled about this program. The fact that we can bring in other people from the community to have some of the same training as well. Kudos.
Thank you. I will also add that I think the benefit, one of the things that JDAI has done very, very well is forced us to kind of break down some of the traditional silos. So instead of it being a youth justice problem or a school problem or a mental health problem, it's really causing all of us to band together and to work together. And it's been so helpful because it's helping to create a common language. So again, with the Interrupting Racism for Children, we had so many people from all across our community, and we were able to start having some of those conversations with kind of that same foundational network or that same vocabulary. And I think this will also do the same thing for that trauma response to the kids and families that we all touch. Again, these are not kids and families unique to the youth system or unique to schools. They're, they're all of our families. So thank you.
Yeah, that last point is such a good one. It matters to the community. It makes such a difference to every, every life in our community. And we appreciate you and your team for doing this really important work. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, let's see if we have any public comments on this item. Just simply click on the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. And I do not see any hands raised. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the consulting agreement with Hope Alight LLC?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Wonderful. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you as well. Excellent. Move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve an amendment to CSG Forte Payments, Inc. Agreement.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. McClellan, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an amendment to the CSG Forte Credit Card Processing Agreement. This changes the fee for e-checks to a flat fee of $1.50 for all transactions up to $100,000. This is a good change because it decreases the fees for large tax payments. So fees are paid by the taxpayer when they pay their taxes online or by phone, and that's paid to Forte, and no fees are collected by the county. And this is only for payments made in the Treasurer's Office. And I also wanted to update the public about tax bills. Tax bills will be mailed April 1st. Taxes are due, spring taxes are due May 10th. And there are many payment options. They can pay by mail, online, by phone, or at certain local banks. And all of the details about that are on the back page of the tax bill. So it's a really brief, simple amendment to the contract. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you so much, Treasurer McClellan. And let's see if there are comments or questions from Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, it just looks like you're saving taxpayers money. So great.
Thanks.
Right. And so please, just want to encourage you to come back and invite you to come back and offer department updates on future, at future Commissioner meetings regarding payments and access to the courthouse and all those things because we are still living in COVID land, and unfortunately. And that has impacted our ability to have the doors open to the public. But we do have the ability for folks to make an appointment, but especially just, it's a good, it's a good reminder for folks that we are still taking precautions to protect our community and, of course, our employees. So, and, but if you want to come back in future weeks, we'd love to see you and to hear about any updates on how to make those important payments.
I will do that. Sounds good. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen. And I do not see any hands raised. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the amendment to the CSG Forte Payments Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Thank you so much. All right. And with that, we'll move on to item C, please.
Move to approve the OSHA 300 Report and a Work Comp Loss Run Report.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Sensensteine here again to share this information with us from Human Resources. Good morning.
Hello again, Commissioners. I sent to you the submission of the OSHA 300 Summary Report, and then also a loss-run report from IPEP, who, they manage our workers' compensation claims. So the OSHA report is based on the information that IPEP, that we send to IPEP. They gather all the information on all of our claims, and that's submitted annually. And then I also wanted to update you, just have an idea about where we are relative to previous years. And we're at, up to date as of the 17th of March on the rest of the work comp claims. And I had gone back and forth a little bit yesterday. There are some weird categories that IPEP uses. And so we don't have hospitals or, what was the other, dentists or physicians. Those, I think, are referenced to animal control, the Health Department, and I think YSB would fall into those categories. So their, their, their standard categories are a little strange, but I tried to get as much information as I could about where those fall into.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
Just thank you for answering all my questions. I mean, when I saw veterinarian hospital on there, I'm like, we don't, we don't have dogs that we take.
Yeah, and I, to be perfectly honest, I hadn't looked at this, you know, when I started about a little over a year ago, I met with IPEP and they went over this information. And when I resaw one of these reports just last week, I was like, that seems a little strange, so I should probably clarify. So I was thinking the same as you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I will note for the record that the total hours worked by all employees in the Monroe County Government last year was 1,433,646 hours. I think that's pretty impressive. And you just don't often see a number like that. 1.4 million hours. It's pretty amazing.
Yeah, and that, you know, that's, that's, that's an average. It may be more than that. I tried to the best of my ability accumulate all of those hours, so.
Right. I was gonna say, when we have exempt workers that are in salary, we go by, this is full-time. And I'm sure that the hours were way more. And I can imagine just between health and our office and legal, we probably, it feels like we work the 1 million each, but. Excellent. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. And I don't see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the OSHA 300 Report, Work Comp Loss Run Report?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Most, I guess a report is accepted.
There we go.
Three to zero.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve All Pro Integrated Systems Contract. Fund name Cable Franchise Fee, fund number 2502, in the amount of $112,973.81.
Second. Great. We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Evans joining us to talk some more about our Nat Hill Room.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, if you recall, a couple of weeks ago, I appeared before you and gave a fairly lengthy presentation of the changes that we're getting ready to make in the Nat Hill Room as we prepare to go back to live in-person meetings. This is the actual contract with the vendor that is going to be doing that work. It has been vetted thoroughly by the legal department. It's gone through revisions. I think we're ready to go with this one.
Great. Thank you so much. I will note for the record that in our packet, we have the quote, but the full contract has been reviewed by legal, and it matches the exact same parameters as the quote that is in the packet. So I just want to make, make that note for public certification. And with that, let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Just, I'm looking forward to the new system.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to those big new TVs that we're gonna have up on the side and being able to see documents and, and, yeah, and to be able to have these hybrid meetings so that we can continue to not only do in-person, but to continue the virtual part of it. We've seen a big uptick in, in community participation. So I'm glad that you figured out a way to make this continue, or to allow it to continue.
Yeah, yeah. Kudos for that work and the planning that goes into that. The technical side is, it seems simple, but it's not, and it never is. And somebody even mentioned it during our Plan Commission meeting yesterday, that they're grateful that, that we can utilize Zoom. So it's going to make a big difference, and I think it'll make a big difference to our community. So thank you for that. And let's see if there's any public comments on this item. It looks like we do have one. Mr. Shelton?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Evans. Jim Shelton, on behalf of the Greater Booms, the Chamber of Commerce, we are strongly in support of this. We certainly agree that being able to have hybrid meetings, when we go back to being able to be face-to-face, is a great way to help maintain the increased transparency that we've been having with these Zoom meetings. So thank you very much for working on this, and I look forward also to the day we can see it work. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. You know, I, one thing I did want to mention to the Commissioners, I was talking with Angie about this yesterday. You know, the Nat Hill Room is, kind of has a special part of my history. When I moved down here to Bloomington in 1987 to go to the music school, the Nat Hill Room was actually the location of my very first professional gig here in town. I was playing piano accompanying the St. Charles Children's Choir. And so it's fairly exciting to be able to, you know, remodel that room so many decades later. It makes me feel quite old.
We need to put a plaque in there now so that it commemorates. Excellent. All right. I don't see any other hands raised. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the All Pro Integrated Systems Contract?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, and I hope Mr. Evans will come serenade us when we reopen the room.
Great idea.
You know, if you ever want me to serenade you, all you have to do is call in and get put on hold. As I'm responsible for the new hold music.
Now I have to call and get put on hold just to see what happens?
It's the Hoagie Carmichael Jazz Classic Stardust that was composed mere blocks from the courthouse.
Nice.
Very nice.
Oh, so thoughtful. That's so cool. Thank you. Can we put that on all of our phones?
It's on all the county phones, yes.
It is now. Okay, great. Excellent. I hated our old hold thing, that crazy piano sounding, but not quite.
Yeah, we got a lot of complaints.
Yes. Yeah. Excellent. Well, now I'm gonna call and get put on hold somewhere. Thank you for that. Please, public, don't just, but when you, when you do call, enjoy, enjoy the music. Thank you. All right.
The motion was approved three to zero.
Right, that's where we're at. I was like, I didn't think I heard that we had approved that, but we did have a vote. Excellent. Thank you. All right. We get so, I get so easily distracted. I'll speak for myself. All right, with that, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve the MS4 Annual Report.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Patonia, our MS4 Coordinator, newly minted, still newly minted, to provide us with. to provide us with our report and some information. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having me this morning. So I wanted to present to you our MS4 annual report. This is covering years 2019 and 2020. So you heard a presentation from Connie Griffin, her MS4 assistant, at the March 10 Stormwater Management Board meeting. She went through in detail all of the elements of the report and so you should be familiar with it. We've done some minor changes to it, but the content of the report is very much the same as that meeting. So I will not go through the entire report today for you, but just for some background on it, normally we have to submit a report to the state in years two and four of our five-year permit period. We are responsible for providing reports for each year as well as participating in state audits of our program each permit cycle. So we typically do not have to report on two years at once, but the state did not require us to submit them last year due to, they weren't prepared to process them because they're overhauling their state MS4 regulations, so they put it off. And so now for this year, we're responsible for reporting on two years at once. So I want to give kudos to Connie Griffin for compiling this whole report as well as to the other departments that have submitted information and helped us over, over the years to implement our program. So the report itself, it needs to be signed by our MS4 operator. So the Board of Commissioners is considered the MS4 operator. And so if you have any questions on it at any time, either about the specific, specific report or just over time, feel free to let me know. It's set up to report on each of the minimum control measures as they're outlined in our Stormwater Quality Management Plan. That is just our implementation plan for the program where we list out our measurable goals or just the tasks that we do. Because all of this is based on, it's all performance-based measures, right? We're not doing county-wide stormwater or water quality monitoring to make sure that we are making improvements to our surface waters. Instead, we take all of the actions that we do, other government entities and the public, businesses, et cetera, everything that we are all collectively doing to make a difference, to reduce the amount of pollutants entering our local waterways. So does anyone have any questions?
Let's see if we do have any comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Just, I'd just like to thank Ms. Griffin for all of her work on this. It's a pretty big task, especially when you've got two years to do.
This report is almost 100 pages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it really helped to have that presentation as well. So if anybody's interested in seeing that, it would be on the CATS archive from the last Stormwater Meeting. I think it's, it's, it may be more helpful than reading through the 100 pages, but both are good together. Together, they make a lot of sense and they provide a lot of information about why this work is so important and how much is being done and now we're going to be able to get more done, so, which is exciting. All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Simply click raise hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on approval of the MS4 annual report?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. All right, we continued item F and so we are going to move on to item B, please.
Move to approve the Resiliency Practice LLC agreement. Sorry. LLC agreement for law enforcement officers, fund name self-insurance, fund number 47,000, in the amount of $105 per hour with a limit of eight hours per officer.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and we have a second and we have Mr. Baker here from County Legal to tell us all about it.
Good morning, commissioners.
Right.
There we go. Want to, I'll introduce the, the proposal to you. I'd like to, with your indulgence here momentarily, to introduce Ryan Davis, captain of operations at the Monroe County Sheriff's Department, who identified a need for the provision of, of counseling for law enforcement officers of the county who have sustained a non-physical injury in the course of their, their official duties for the county. The identification of that need was the impetus that began a dialogue with a local licensed clinical social worker. Her name is Amanda Salatin, to discuss the, the, the nature of, of non-physical injuries that, that law enforcement officers are prone to and the type of services that are helpful to them in, in, in recovering from those injuries and what she could do to assist us with, with that kind of program. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the contract. I think it might be helpful, if you don't mind, to have Ryan talk with you a little bit about the, the identified need from, from the law enforcement officer's perspective. And again, he's, I think he's the one that kind of started this whole thing rolling. So with your permission, I'd like to introduce Ryan Davis.
Great. Thank you so much. Mr. Davis, it looks like you need to unmute. There you go.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I appreciate your time and this opportunity to address you all on such an exciting and critical topic. I've been working on getting this project to this stage for nearly four years. It became a passion project of mine while attending the FBI National Academy back in 2017, where I attended a class focused on employee at-risk behavior, which was centered on topics from PTSD to substance abuse to general unhealthy coping, from the stresses of not only the type of work that our deputies perform on a day-to-day basis, but also the stresses of personal life and how it can affect their performance at work. After sharing stories with law enforcement leaders from all over the world in Quantico, I knew that I, as an administrator, had to do something here in Monroe County to bring specialized services to my peers. There were several obstacles that needed to be overcome to make this program a success. First was changing the culture, that it was unacceptable to ask for help, which I believe we have accomplished. Second was finding a provider that has experience not only in treating public safety individuals, but has personal experience with public safety. Lastly was to develop the system where the individual employee feels confident that there is a protection in place, that others within the agency, including command staff, will not know that they're being treated unless that employee chooses to disclose that themselves. After being referred to Amanda with a resiliency practice by a colleague that I have known professionally for 15 years, I was eager to set up a meeting. At the conclusion of that meeting, I knew I had found the ideal person to try and establish a partnership with. With the hard work and assistance of Mr. Baker with County Legal, I feel the contract before you today checks every box on the wish list of services I had hoped to bring home from Quantico nearly four years ago. I appreciate your time this morning and I ask for your support to bring this project to reality.
Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate you both being here today. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
The kind of stress that the sheriffs must experience in their job is really pretty awful to think about. And I'm just very, very pleased that Mr. Davis heard about this and acted on it. And it sounds like he's found exactly the right person to work with. So I have high hopes that this will be a very helpful program for our sheriffs.
Right. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I also applaud everybody who's been involved with this and in fact have been in touch with Mr. Baker to say, are there other units within county government, such as maybe the coroner's office, who could also benefit from this kind of support for the work that they do?
And I think that was a really good idea and let's see what, what they can come up with. And I think it's a smart, a smart move. Yeah, I so appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this, the initiative that was taken. This is important. This really is important for all of our residents. But it will make a difference in our community. And I think it just shows the, the care and attention for the deputies and jail staff and all the folks who work with the Monroe County Sheriff, that there is a great deal of thoughtfulness and compassion within that department for all of the employees. So I really appreciate the work that went into putting this together and bringing this forward. And it sounds like this is a really great provider that you found, so really good work. And I'm sure not something that was easy to find. So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just click on the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. And I do not see any. And so with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Resiliency Practice Agreement for Law Enforcement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three zero.
Right. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
That will move on to item H, please.
Move to approve ratification of updating the Emergency Management Chapter 450 of Monroe County Code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell, will you please walk us through this? This is a, something we heard last week.
Yes, and I think you're all aware of it. I will note that the packet did not have the revised version of it, but you guys have all, should have all received that by, via email. There's not a whole lot of huge changes involved in this. There are essentially three. One is changing the name of, the title of the position from coordinator to director and then the deputy from deputy coordinator to deputy director. The second involves the hiring process and gives the director a little bit more authority in determining who the deputy director is. It still has to go, they still have to consult with the EMAC, but it does give them a little bit more authority there. And it changes, it references instead of the warning plan to, it just references the comprehensive plan for the emergency man, the emergency management comprehensive plan in one of the sections. I did go ahead and have this in ordinance form and that ordinance number is 2021-9. And that's just, makes it easier to put this back into our code. If you recall, two weeks ago, we did the code update and so this would, would allow for those kind of references that we usually include with that to occur.
Okay, so the ordinance number, just to make sure we're on the same page, your ordinance number is 2021-09?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No. Good to go.
Okay. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Again, this is an item that we heard last week. We voted on it because of issue getting this to the state. So this is a ratification vote. I don't see any public comments. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on ordinance 2021-09?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-15 regarding Highway Department's Surplus Property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Cockrell. Will you please tell us about it?
Yes, the Highway Department has 103 concrete forms that are no longer necessary and a 1993 compressor that is no longer necessary. This will allow them to get those out of the building and out of, out of our area so that they can use that space for something more useful. I assume they will replace the compressor or have already. And so it's just getting them some space out there and getting rid of some stuff they can't use anymore.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Well, I couldn't help wondering exactly what you do with 103 concrete forms. Is anyone else going to want them? And if not, how do you go about disposing of them? If you happen to know.
I, I don't know if anybody would ever want 103. I mean, that, maybe, I mean, somebody who does a lot of concrete work may, may find it useful, but I'm not positive. My assumption is that since the ADA has come around that how they do the sidewalks and, and those kind of things has just changed. So that's why they're no longer necessary and no longer useful. So I would, I would suspect that they're probably not going to get bid on. There may be some metal in them, so they may have some scrap value, but other than that, I believe it says that all the items together are under, under the 5,000 and I'm, I'm thinking that that is well under a five, the 5,000 one.
Yeah. This may be a scrap issue.
It's just unfortunate to think of all that concrete going to a landfill, which I assume is what happens if no one wants it.
I, and I am not in the Highway Department, but when I read the concrete forms, I read that the, it's how they, the, the kind of the sides when they pour the concrete and so it, it's not concrete itself. It's not like the big concrete things, but it's the, it's kind of how they, you know, that when they make a curb, they've got to put, I always thought they used two-by-four, which is, tells you, tells you what, it's how they make sure that it's, the concrete goes where it's supposed to.
Thank you. I learn more about highway all the time.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, it's a good, good time to do spring cleaning, obviously.
Can't beat it. All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Maybe somebody was solving the mystery of the concrete forms and why there's an odd number. That's what struck me. All right, I don't see any. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Resolution 2021-015?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, we don't have any appointments today. We do have just a couple of quick announcements. Just a reminder that we are still accepting applications for grant funding from Cares Money and that grant funding is for businesses or social service organizations in the county who have COVID-related, non-payroll expenses that have not been covered by other loans or grants. We are doing its, these reviews more cyclically now. So we are going to review the March submissions soon in April for approval, ratification. And then as of now, our program is slated to end April 30th and hopefully that will work nicely and dovetail nicely with the, the arrival of the American Rescue Plan funding for business, community and social services. As of the end of February, we have approved a total of $816,541. So if you'd like to apply for funding, please go to co.munro.us, it's right in the center of the page. There's more information there as well on, on what kinds of expenses qualify. We also want to remind our residents who may be struggling to pay rent and for utilities and things like that. And please contact your township trustee as soon as possible. Every county resident, whether they live in the city, a town or not, county resident, whether they live in the city, a town or not, has a township trustee. Please go to co.monegrove.in.us, go to the emergency management page for a contact list of all of the township trustee offices. We've worked with the council to provide funding on the Township Assistance Fund dollars to help assist those, those townships to provide that funding to ensure people remain safely sheltered and with the necessities of life. So that is also available. Any other announcements?
I just wanted to remind people that the governor yesterday indicated that the state income tax filing date has been moved to coincide with the federal, so it'll be May 17.
Thank you. Anything else? So we do want to remind everyone to please get vaccinated as soon as it's your turn and keep an eye on the moving numbers because we're now at age 40 and up. Also, to please continue to wear your face covering while you're out in public, practice physical distancing and please keep washing your hands because we're, we may be going through a bit of a surge again in cases and we want to make sure that we protect our community. So just a reminder that even if you are vaccinated, that when you are out in public, you, you should be continuing those practices to keep our community safe. So with that, we are adjourned and we will come back at 11:25 for our work session, if that's okay with both of you. Does that work? Okay, great. So we'll come back at 11:25. With that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.